Being that it is seven o'clock, we'll call tonight's agenda, or meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, May 29th to order. At this time, would you join us in rising for the pledge of allegiance? After the pledge of allegiance, we'll ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence for the many heroes of last Friday's events here in Noblesville. Ms. Wiles, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, before we start the meeting, I would like to read a statement on behalf of the entire common council. Last Friday, Miller Nation was changed forever. In the hours and days since, we have seen the best of this great community. During the event, our partners at the Noblesville Police Department, Noblesville Schools, Noblesville Fire Department, Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, the Indiana State Police, and countless other law enforcement agencies sprang into action with one goal in mind, to keep our students and communities safe. The heroic actions of our teachers and students, and in particular, Jason Seaman, helped save countless lives. While our hearts break for the city we all love, we are also confident that lessons were learned on Friday that will help not only Noblesville in the future, but other communities as well. In the coming weeks and months, we will be working hand in hand with our public safety departments and Noblesville Schools to offer our full support. Discussions were already underway before Friday to enhance our public safety presence at our schools. We, as a council, continue to pray for our Miller family. We know thoughts and prayers are important at this time, but action will be required in the near future. We are ready to be a partner and engage in those discussions as we work to make our community even safer. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Hampton? Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Ms. Rowland? Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Mr. Jensen?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes for the May 12th, 2018 council retreats.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor. Seven zero. Approval of the minutes for the May 15th joint session with the plan commission.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor.
One abstention.
Six with, six approved, one abstention. Next up, approval of the minutes for the May 15th, 2018 meeting.
Question to approve?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor.
One abstention.
Six to, six to zero, one abstention. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Question to approve?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor. Seven to zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present, I have one, and I know it's in conjunction with an ordinance we'll be discussing shortly, so I'll call upon you if there are questions at that point in time. If anyone else would like to speak tonight, there are cards just outside the door there, and please present them to the clerk at your convenience. Moving right along to a special mayor's report to council. Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you very much, members of council. I will report on a few things to, before our most important announcement. We met with youth assistance, with Senator Sparch, who's very interested in that program in Hamilton County and throughout the state, actually. We had a nice touch of truck, or machine, or whatever affair on, here in the city. A lot, a lot of young people came out to, again, just see some of that equipment. And just a fun time to make available to the younger members of our city. We did cut the ribbon on the second phase of the Midland Trace, and then after that fatal day, or that day, pardon me, there was a prayer, community prayer vigil at the commons. We felt that it was needed, it was put together fairly quickly, but the response was outstanding. Many were there, and thought it was a great time to go to our God and count our blessings. Both US senators were there because they care, and Congresswoman Brooks and the governor also is a higher elected official. So, again, I think it was much needed by our community, and, again, we came together in that tragedy, and hopefully we'll just move on with hope and love in the future. And then certainly, we were closed yesterday for Memorial Day. Comes coming up, things coming up. We do, the council knows, honor and respect our employees. We have an employee appreciation week, starts on the 4th of June, and then on the 7th, there's the grand opening reception of the Noblesville Embassy Suites and Conference Center. As you may know, and one reason that we've got some proud parents and some outstanding young people in this audience, I did decide to have a mayor's youth council. Probably should have done it earlier, but, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, but nonetheless, happy to do that. And we had several mayors do that, and the idea, of course, is to get young people involved in local government, to have them suggest new and fresh ideas as to what they expect from their city, and in fact, what they may want. And so, we had four outstanding young men come forward, and I'm going to ask them to come forward as we start this, that decided to be the, they called themselves the founding four, and we're very proud of these four young men. First is Al Alvarez, Al? Thank you. You might stand and start. Oh, you want to do it? I'm sorry. Second's John Cook.
Congratulations, Mr. Cook.
Third is Salil Cooper.
Congratulations.
And the last of the final four, I like that, even final four, instead of founding four, is Sam Worth. And I'm going to turn over to the chairman, I think appointed chairman by the other three, to, and induct, if you will, the rest of the members of the 2018 mayor's youth council. So, Salil, let you do that.
Sorry to make everybody wait. We're very happy to welcome you today. If we could have Delaney Amstler first come up, and after we call your name, if you could pause for a moment for a picture with the mayor. Thank you. Delaney Amstler.
Congratulations.
Nick Beeson.
Congratulations, Nick.
Aiden Biddle is next. Joseph Gassen Smith. Luke Johns.
Congratulations, Luke.
Zach Lamontio. Lauren Patrick.
Congratulations, Zach, thank you.
Congratulations.
Ellie Payne.
Congratulations, Ellie.
Trevor Rice. Grace Wiles. Karis Wisnewski. We'd also like to call Mrs. Michelle Gwodowski, and thank her for all her tireless efforts in helping us found this council. Sam has some flowers to give her.
Michelle is surprised a little bit. She says a little out of her comfort zone, but she was great working together with these young people. We're going to make this real official, and so therefore, I will ask you to repeat after me. I've chopped it up in little bites for me, and not necessarily for you, but, because you can, but anyway. This is the oath of office for the Noblesville Mayor's Youth Council. If you'll repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear in accordance with its bylaws that I will uphold, promote, and support the goals and objectives of the Noblesville Youth Mayor's Council that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Noblesville Mayor's Youth Council and that I will serve as a positive role model serve as a leader and voice for the youth of our community honestly and to the best of my skill and ability. Very good. I know you guys get ahead of me, but I had to chop it up. Again, that's the inaugural group of youth council. Thank you very much, and congratulations. We're excited to work together.
Could everybody join us outside for a picture with Robert? Thank you.
I would like to mention, too, this was a selection process. Students were given the opportunity to make an application, answer some questions of what, why they feel they could serve, and what some of the challenges would be. It was open to all schools in the city, and including home school children, students. So, again, the students selected these members, and we look forward, obviously, to that growing in the future. So, thank you. Anything, any questions of me?
Questions of the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick comment. Thank you for starting that. I think it's a great program, and I appreciate you getting it moving.
Well, thank you. I, something I've wanted to do for a long time, and I appreciate, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so the parents can go
Yeah.
out if you would like. You're welcome to stay, again. You're welcome to stay.
Moving along with tonight's agenda, council committee reports. Mr. Taylor?
I don't have a report, but I want to make a comment. Downtown Infrastructure's supposed to have a meeting today, and due to circumstances and some people that couldn't attend, and a very busy agenda, we didn't think it was going to be a productive meeting. So, we canceled that meeting. Obviously, downtown infrastructure's very important to everybody in this house, in this room, but I'd like to have a meeting if it's not productive, and there were some key people that couldn't be there. So, we're going to reschedule that very soon, and hopefully, we will.
Districtal committee reports. Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening, everyone. The finance committee met May 24th. The biggest item on this agenda was our most favorite thing, which is the 2019 budget process. So, it's hard to believe it's almost June, but it is. And so, Mr. Spalding is putting together, and has put together, a timeline to make sure that we stay on track and we get our 2019 budget in place. It's likely the structure of that will be similar to what we've done historically. We'll have the department heads in, we'll have conversations about different things that they're looking to do in 2019. Mr. Spalding's going to attempt to integrate OpenGov in that process, so we're going to try to use that tool to some extent this year. But I think you'll find it to be productive as, as I thought last year's was. I thought we went through that process well, and identified all the things we needed to. One thing you might think about, there's a couple of items that we've appropriated money for this year that weren't in the budget, that could have been in the budget. So, if there are things that you're thinking about that we may want to incorporate into the budget, as opposed to doing separate appropriations, feel free to let me know, or let somebody on the finance committee know. We all are aware of our ongoing needs for funding for various projects, but we want to try to incorporate as much as we can into the budget process itself. Other pending items, there are a number of different ordinances that will be coming forward, updating different things, so we'll see those over the next few meetings. Open Gov and the personnel cause forecasting module, and the budget builders I mentioned, we're going to try to use those tools to the extent that we can this year, as we go through the process. And we had a few other conversations regarding some things that are on the agenda this evening, and policy analytics is going to be doing the TIF analysis and study for us. That contract will be effective June 1st, and I think that data will give us a really good benchmark to work from as we go forward on cash flows, and how that's going to affect what we're going to be able to do from a funding perspective, particularly on the infrastructure projects that we're looking at. So, that was really it. Were there any other items, other committee members? So, that's my report, and I will, the claims were sent to you with a favorable recommendation, so I will make a motion to approve the claims that submitted.
Before we do that, can we see if there are any other council committee reports?
Absolutely, we can.
That's a loaded question, because I have one, so. Do you need me to second that before we go on to other discussion?
Sure, you can.
Okay.
You can wait.
I'll wait. Thank you, wait right there. There we go. All right. I have a committee report for the public safety committee. Mr. Hampton chairs that committee. He chose tonight to be with his daughter as she plays in the regional for Noblesville Miller softball. I think we all agree it's where he needs to be tonight. But the public safety committee actually met with Police Chief Kevin Jowett and Fire Chief Greg Wyatt on May 18th, so approximately eighteen, or 10 days ago. I will submit these notes to the clerk for the minutes, but some highlights of those, they actually discussed the idea of school safety. Chief Jowett's been working for some time on possibly some additional officers in, and within our school system. I think that is agreeable, and definitely a priority after this past week's event. So, he's working on budgeting for those in conjunction with the schools going forward to come up with a reasonable solution in terms of that small piece of a, of a much greater project and policy. Also, there were discussions quite a bit about the new police station, as we've heard about for, for quite some time, that there is still a need, still focusing on the old Firestone site for that location. Additionally, on the fire side, Police Chief Kevin Wyatt reported that Noblesville Fire Department's in searching for seven new firefighters, and it's actually becoming a difficult challenge to find the quality candidates. They know that they're out there, but they're working harder to find the right people. And the Fire Department will be budgeting for a new ambulance in 2019. So, that is the report. I will, I will forward Mr. Hampton's minutes onto Clerk Lee's for the minutes. And Mr. Taylor, if you have anything to add to that, feel free.
I think you've covered it all.
Okay. So, with that, is there a second to approve the claims?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving along with tonight's agenda, previously discussed ordinances, previously discussed ordinance 14-05-18. Council to consider ordinance 14-05-18, and ordinance amending ordinance 76-09-06 for Cumberland Farms Plan Development at 21339 State Road 19. Ms. Ashelman. Ms. Ashelman.
Good evening. I'm not going to add a whole lot to this, but this is just a reminder of the types of landscaping that they're varying. They are, in most instances, where they're asking for waivers, replacing their plants they're asking for waivers with evergreen trees. The only exception to that is the interior parking lot landscaping, but they are including a substantial number of evergreen trees to screen those areas where they're asking for Sherabau waivers. Staff does recommend approval, and it comes to you with a favorable recommendation from Plan Commission.
Any questions of staff? Would the petitioner like to speak this evening? Mr. Wirt?
Somebody had a question last time about what was around, and so I prepared an exhibit.
Name and address, please.
For the record, I'm Andy Wirt, land use professional with law firm Church Churchill in Antrim, with offices to North Knight Street, here in Noblesville, here tonight with Kelly Fagan, an attorney with our office, on behalf of our client, Chip McCauley, owner of Fluid Waste Services. This is a, for those of you who don't know, it's a utility maintenance operation that served local communities since late 80s. 2016, construction of a 19,000 square foot facility at State Road 19 was completed. During construction, it became evident to the owner that there were some operational issues that would conflict with the landscaping proposed. Set this up here, this is the, what's being proposed in front of you here. These conflicts had to do with large vehicles, and some of these are, if I might exhibit here, some of these are pretty good size. They, they're large, they're 70,000 pounds empty. They also have a large turning radius. So the elimination of the island on the east end of the building was kind of a practical one. Combination of irrigation necessary for the plants and the heavy truck traffic could quickly lead to pavement failure. Unfortunately, the owner had justice happen to them at a previous location, so we thought it would be desirable to focus the landscaping towards screening on State Road 19. And that's what we've done with the landscape plan. Got a recent photo. Let me get everything mixed up here. We were able to save quite a few of the larger trees along 19. We've got more landscaping to go in there. We do believe that this is a stand-up facility and a, certainly a good example for the State Road 19 corridor. So at this point, happy to answer any questions you've got.
Any questions, Mr. Wirt? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
President.
Taylor.
I make a motion and we approve ordinance 14-05-18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce? Mr. Hampton? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Aye. The ordinance is approved.
Very much. Thank you, Mr. Wirt.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Moving right along, ordinance 15-05-18. Council to consider ordinance 15-05-18, an ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance regarding a special consideration for the construction of a church in the Cumberland Point Plan Development at 10005 Cumberland Point Boulevard. Ms. Yelton.
As you may recall, this is a request to basically allow a church on the site within the industrial park. At the last meeting, there was not a whole lot of discussion. At the Plan Commission meeting, it was noted that they only had provided 25 parking spaces, which met the ordinance. They were requested to add additional parking spaces. Our city engineer, John Berry, went back and looked at some of the transportation manuals and felt that 37 additional parking spaces, 37 total parking spaces, would be sufficient for this church that will have a capacity of 100 individuals. So this is a site plan that does share the 37 onsite parking spaces. This item was sent to you by, from the Plan Commission for adoption by a 7-0-1 vote. And I do know that the pastor is here, should you have any questions. Gordon Byers is here, who represented them also.
Questions of Ms. Yelton? Petitioner would like to speak? I know I have a John Smith here, but I think you're on standby in case there are questions, correct? Mr. Smith? Yes? I'm sorry, I was looking the wrong corner. I apologize. So any questions of the petitioners? Mr. Howard?
One item. This is in a TIF district, and we do, Mr. Byers and I have worked together, and we have the terms of a pilot or payment in lieu of taxes agreement. The issue is that the actual entity that the church is going to receive or take title by, they're not sure yet, so I would suggest that the motion include a provision that the improvement location permit not be issued until that document is signed by the proper entity and recorded.
Additional questions? Comments? Does anybody want to make that motion and rehash what he said?
You can just say what you said. You can have a statement.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 15-05-18, subject to an improvement location permit to be issued only upon receipt of appropriate corporate documentation to substantiate the entity to whom will own the property and will pay taxes.
Payments in lieu of
Payments in lieu of taxes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce? Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
That's six aye. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Moving on, 16-05-18. Council to consider ordinance 16-05-18, an ordinance for text amendments to section 32.12 of the City's Code of Ordinances, Council's Rules of Procedures. Ms. Lee's.
There have been no changes. Mr. O'Connor pointed out a typo, which I will get fixed, but passage of this ordinance will allow me to call the roll in a different order without Mr. Eyre being first every time.
Does that mean we need to go on our toes after this?
Any questions of Ms. Lee's? Seeing none, will entertain a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Eyre?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 16-05-18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk will call the roll.
One last time.
One last time.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Six, zero. The ordinance is approved.
Very much. Moving on to proposed development presentation.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wild?
I would like to make a motion that we postpone the proposed development presentation regarding the Midland Overlook Plan Development for another two weeks.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone proposed development presentation number one. All those in favor? Six to zero. Thank you very much. Moving right along, new ordinance for discussion, 18-05-18. Council to consider ordinance 18-05-18, an ordinance for text amendments regarding signage for the St. Vincent Hospital located within the Promenade Plan Development at 6139 Promenade Shops Boulevard.
Motion to introduce? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Good evening, Ms. Yelton.
Thank you. The item before you is basically an amendment to the overall plan development for the Promenade Shops area. It is a site of the St. Vincent Micro Hospital. They basically have, at their other site along 146th Street, came back before this body and did receive approval for additional signage. In a nutshell, the signage that they're proposing basically is indicated here at these locations. We've got a St. Vincent's Hospital sign that would be on the other, the other, the eastern portion of the building. We've got the word entrance that would basically go over the entrance into the hospital, and then the word emergency would be on the canopy that, indicating that that's where the emergency vehicles go. Again, the sign sizes, basically, I think the entrance sign, the entrance sign is a little larger than what would be permitted. The other signs, I believe, fall within, within the size requirements. And the reason for the request has to do with the fact that, basically, on certain elevations, you're only allowed to have one sign, and so we get more than one sign on an elevation, and they have to come back for a request before this body. The Plan Commission did send this to you with an 8-0 approval for adoption.
Questions of Ms. Yelton? Mr. Taylor?
Mr. President?
Mr. Taylor has his hand up first.
So we, we, your council has already approved two signs, and this would be a third? Is that correct?
Okay. These are the signs that they, that, these are the four additional signs that they want to have. It's a total of four. Two saying emergency, one saying entrance, and the other one that basically says St. Vincent's Hospital on it. Those are the four signs. There are already existing signs that we have already approved at a staff level.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Connor?
Joyceanne, is this signed package consistent with the property on 146th Street, more or less?
Yeah, it is more or less consistent with that. I didn't recall them having an additional sign, basically, that said the hospital name, but that hospital is, their emergency room is not facing like 146th Street like this one is. You know, the canopy part of this is basically, you drive under it here. Theirs just happens to be on 146th Street on the west side of the building, so I think that probably has a little bit to do with it. So overall, it's one additional sign, maybe, from what they have on 146th Street.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? Seeing none, would this petitioner like to speak?
I'm going to guess the petitioner's not here
Okay, well.
Because they had to travel clear from
Texas?
Well, not from Texas, but they did come from southern Indiana, Evansville.
All right. We will see you back in two weeks.
Great.
Thank you so much. Moving on, our agenda, clerk, please, can I take these ones together, or do we need to do them separately?
Okay. You're going to be first in the queue, and I'll be second in the queue.
Thank you very much. All right. Ordinance 19-05-18. Council to consider ordinance 19-05-18, an ordinance to modify the land use classification from office flex to industrial office and amend the sub-district to the 146th Street corridor for 83 acres north of 146th Street, west of Howe Road, and east of Edgar Way, part of the corporate campus plan development district.
Motion to introduce? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Moving on, ordinance 20-05-18. Council to consider ordinance 20-05-18, an ordinance adopting a preliminary development plan and plan development ordinance for SMC of America Plan Development District, part of the corporate campus plan development, including a portion of Smithfield Business Park Plan Development, containing 83 acres north of 146th Street, west of Howe Road, and east of Edgar Way.
Motion to introduce? Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much, Ms. Yelton.
The item before you basically deals with approximately 225 acres overall that is owned by SMC of America. The property in question today basically breaks down to approximately 83 acres. I'm going to start with, basically, what is shown as a portion of our corporate campus map, and what you are seeing here is the property that here is in brown is currently a part of the Smithfield Business Park, which is basically, includes this area, in this area here and this item here. The item next to that, basically, this area in here, is where their proposed building is also going. Staff made the request that, in order to clean up this area, since they now own most of the Smithfield Business Park property, to come back and actually go through this amendment process. So in a nutshell, what we are doing here is basically taking this brown area, which is currently part of the Smithfield Business Park, and taking it out of the Smithfield Business Park, and putting it in, basically, an SMC plan development area. This particular piece of property here is basically, we are changing the, basically, underlying purple here, which is, which is currently office flex, to be a pink area, which becomes office, industrial office. Basically, that's the same as what currently exists for the SMC current location. The other thing that we are doing, as you can see, there is a checkered pattern here, which basically has to do with the character overlay. They are changing, in this area here, the checkered pattern to basically be the stripe pattern, which again will deal with your landscaping and architectural requirements. This is a more stringent requirement, the stripe, because it is known as the 146th Street corridor. The one that basically is, is the hatched area, is basically known as an internal, internal area. So again, just to look at this, the area here that we, that is currently outlined, is currently, you know, a part of the Smithfield Business Park, which will become a part of this overall. This is the entire 83 acres that we are looking at on this project. Again, this is the piece of property that basically is, is currently office flex that will become industrial office. And this is basically just an overall site plan of what they are proposing. This being the existing SMC building, this area here being the former Stanley Building, which is not a part of their property, this piece of property where the detention pond is, is not a part of their property, and therometrics is not a part of the SMC property. But everything else in that area, basically, from Howe Road, 146th Street, Cumberland Road, to the existing SMC property, northern property line, is owned by SMC. Again, this is the area here that we would focus on, currently proposed another million-plus square foot building, and this is basically a look at, at what that building will look at, be very similar to what currently exists with the SMC building. This did come to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption from the Plan Commission at an 8-0 vote. There is a request to suspend the rules and basically hear this, this evening, and give a, you know, adoption. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions.
I have one.
Mr. O'Connor?
So Joyceanne, if you go back to where all the hatch and the office flex and
Okay, yes.
All the
If you get back there.
All the colors.
Yes.
So ultimately, what do we end up with? Is it all industrial office, or
Okay.
Which is 146th Street corridor?
This area here, which is the 83 acres
Yep.
Will basically turn to be pink, and it'll be industrial office, but it will have the stripes as opposed to this internal character overlay. Eventually, they will come back with, to amend this existing plan to include the rest of their acreage that they own. But in order for us to get moving on the construction of this building, we had to break it down into, kind of like this
Height-sized pieces?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood, so that helps.
No questions of staff? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to speak? Mr. Dobyshevitz?
I made my goodies here.
Really quickly, we won't be redundant, but for the record, John Dobyshevitz, land use professional with the law firm in Nelson and Frankenberg, with offices located in Carmel, Indiana. We represent the petitioner, SMC Corporation of America. We request this evening adoption of the rezon request, as well as a PD ordinance to be known as the SMC 2018 CCPD ordinance. Present tonight is Chad Bossler, Director of Production for SMC, Chip Glisten, Facilities Manager, also with SMC, Sean Curran, the Project Architect, R.J. Burton of Victory Unlimited Construction, the General Contractor, and Jim Shinnever, an attorney with our office. As Joyce Ann indicated, the 83 acres, which is a subject of both the rezon request and the PD, is outlined in yellow on the area on display. It's north of 146th Street, west of and adjacent to Howe Road, and east of Cumberland Road. To succinctly address the issue that Mr. O'Connor brought up, the approval of the rezon request, the first ordinance on your agenda this evening, will result in all of this lot too, the area outlined in yellow being one consistent zoning classification. That'll be the CCPD with the subject district of industrial office, which is the existing district, which is the existing building today, with the character overlay of 146th Street, which is the higher architectural and character requirements attributed to those buildings, which would be closer to 146th Street. With that said, we would respectfully request the council's consideration this evening of suspension of your rules and final reading and adoption consideration this evening. There's construction, pre-construction meetings under review by the planning staff, and they're hopeful to get under construction within the next week to 10 days. We understand if you want to take this under conditional consideration and come back at your next meeting, in the event you have questions, we'll address those this evening, but again, we would respectfully request your consideration of suspension this evening and adoption of both ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Dobishewitz? Mr. O'Connor?
John, with regard to the passing on first reading, is that, what's the timeline to start construction? Did I hear you say 10 days?
They're in a position to schedule their pre-construction meeting.
Schedule the meetings?
Well, they're, they can't schedule pre-construction until they have adoption by the council on the ordinance that's, and the staff can't issue the permits, I believe.
And we've already had, we've already had a pre-construction meeting. In fact, we have already issued an improvement location permit. What that, well, let, let me just say, they didn't do this, we could have done this whether they were coming for this public hearing process or not. It is basically an opportunity for them to do, to do earthmoving, you know, install their infrastructure, remove any infrastructure that they have to do. Obviously, if they do it early, they know, they understand that it's all done at their risk. So if this project got turned down and they had already started with the ILP, the earthmoving, it's done at their own risk.
Additional comments or questions? There has been a request to waive the rules and pass on first reading. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Do I need more? I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass 19-05-18 on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor waive the rules? Six to zero. Now do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second. You gotta do the
Gotta read it. A motion to approve ordinance 19015-18.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Six aye. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. There's also been a request to waive the rules and pass the next ordinance on first reading. Do we have a motion to do so?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 20-05-18 on first reading.
Second.
Moved in second to waive the rules. All those in favor? Six to zero. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 20-05-18 as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilds?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Six aye. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, guys.
We're happy to have you here in Noblesville.
Yes.
Move that dirt, Chad.
Moving right along, miscellaneous item number one. Counsel to consider resolution RC-10-18, a resolution concerning repeal of previous resolutions for economic revitalization areas. Mr. Howard. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
You are not Mr. Howard.
I know. Look a little bit different.
A welcome sight. No offense.
Remember that.
To all of us, trust me.
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. The resolution that's before you asks your approval to repeal four previously approved resolutions designating economic revitalization areas. None of those four resolutions described in the body of the resolution RC 1018 have been initiated, and I'd like your approval tonight through this resolution to repeal the described past resolutions and that the past-created economic revitalization areas be vacated.
Any questions of Ms. Johnson?
President?
Ms. Eyre?
I make a motion we approve RC 10-18.
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass RC-10-18. All those in favor? Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, miscellaneous number two. Counsel to consider an interlocal agreement with Hamilton County regarding funding and administrative provisions of the youth assistance program. Mr. Howard?
This interlocal agreement was under the supervision of Mr. Murphy last year, and so I jumped in, and he's taken care of this in the past. Essentially, the youth services program, those, the people who are employed are employees of Hamilton County. They receive county benefits. They are under the supervision of essentially the county personnel policy. In the past, it's my understanding, the last few years, we, we just paid to the county the amount that is appropriated. If you look at the funding provisions, at the bottom of the first page, it says the unit may make financial contributions as it determines through its fiscal or legislative body to Hamilton County. And it's for the sole exclusive purpose of funding this program. It's my understanding that there's $65,000 in your 2018 budget to pay according to this interlocal agreement. Our controller, there's new sheriff in town. He likes there to be an agreement if we're going to spend money, which is probably a very good rule. And I'll stop and answer any questions. The youth assistance budget at the county eagerly awaits our $65,000.
Any questions of Mr. Howard?
I'll just make a comment that Darren and I kind of went back and forth on whether or not we really even needed the interlocal agreement, so that's why we didn't do it last year, but I have no problem with having an agreement in place, just make it official that the dollars are being sent to the county for NYAP, so I'd be happy to make a motion to approve miscellaneous number two. No, I gotta find the number.
Hold on, number, you gotta read it.
Oh. Approve
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Is this something that we'll do year by year on this local agreement?
Yes, and youth services and the county would appreciate that we move it up a little earlier in the fiscal year.
I think that question, I think, for the issue of transparency, it's important to have that.
I mean, it's up to you.
The number may change, but the interlocal will have to be presented on annual basis.
We're just locked in for one year.
You're locked in for one year at, at whatever your budget, you as a fiscal body approves as part of your budget process or through additional appropriation.
Thank you.
Any additional questions before we entertain a motion?
I do believe there is a 90-day out close in there. Correct?
I think there is.
Any agreement? I think that's probably right. Either way.
Mr. O'Connor?
I will make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Hamilton County regarding funding and administrative provisions of the youth assistance program.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Six to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on, this evening we'll wrap up with council comments.
President?
Mr. Eyre?
The mayor touched on the touch, touch a truck program that was here a week ago Tuesday, a week ago today, I guess. I did attend that since it was fairly close to my home, and it was very well attended.
You just said you wanted to touch the truck.
I did. I only listened to him blow the horns on the truck for, you know, for nine, three hours, but it was very well attended. They, the, the city provided hot dogs, popcorn, water. They ran out of hot dogs about 15 minutes before it was over, and I believe Mr. Berry cooked 320 hot dogs. Sarah, or not Sarah, Denise could not keep up with the popcorn, and I had to help a little, and she spilled oil on me. But Patty Johnson was serving. We have lots of employees that, that did a really nice job, worked, worked after hours, and, and I appreciate them doing that. We saw, we saw, I don't know, many strollers. I didn't know there were that many little kids in town, but it was very well, and I appreciate the city doing that, and I know the community does. Also, Mr. Boyce apologized for driving late early. His daughter had a, was getting a certificate at the school program, and so that's why he had to leave the night early.
Additional council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would just have one. I was just kind of struck when we did the pledge of allegiance before the meeting that it's always nice to hear all the people that are in here and hearing the pledge of allegiance with some veracity and some commitment, and I think after what we've been through, that was good to hear, and there were some extraordinary things that were done over the last few days, and I think it just exemplifies the commitment of our public safety folks, so you know, we've got a lot to be thankful for, and we're going to continue to move forward. We live in a great city, and I think that I'd like to see more people here at these meetings because it really is important. Because there's a lot of things that affect everybody that lives in this community, so but that, I just, the pledge of allegiance has kind of stood the hair up on the back of my neck a little bit, so it was good to hear.
That'd be a reminder that all are welcome to attend in the people's house, so.
True.
Ms. Wilds, do you have a comment?
I was just going to commend the mayor for creating this youth council, and I think it'll be a wonderful opportunity for all of us to hear thoughts and ideas of how they'd like to see our community continue to grow and move forward, and getting kids involved at this age, I think is just terrific, so thank you very much for doing that, and I look forward to working with all of them.
No comments? Does we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening. Thank you.